Call the meeting to order, document, the time is 6:30. And if you would join me with a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the republic, the liberty and justice for all. And Tori, if you would not mind. Now it's to get settled. Mindfulness start. Any agenda review and/or adjustment items? How with that, our focus on learning this evening, our last in a series of cultural presentations. Kristen, you wanna do the intros?
Welcome everybody again.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. So this is the final presentation in our series of six cultural presentations over the last year. And it's on our Congolese population, which is our largest increasing population. This is the third year that we'll have a Swahili and French speaking liaison on staff. And we realized, you know, three years ago that that population was increasing so much due to resettlement, that we really needed someone on staff who could really support those families. And Stevia Mukuzo is our new liaison, who started in August. And she hit the ground running, trial by fire. She's been very busy and she's a recent UVM grad, you know, from the spring of 2019. And we've really enjoyed having her. She's a wealth of knowledge about the community. She's a huge advocate for students. And she really goes above and beyond to make connections with families and students and help teachers and administrators like us learn more. So I'd like to call her up and I, again, just wanna say, I'll be sharing out more in December about how much our liaisons do. But some of the new exciting data I have as well is we implemented a help desk ticket system this year, so that we now have data to show all of the work I keep talking about the liaisons doing that I'll be able to show in December. Because now whenever people are asking them to do something, it's going into the ticket system. And it's definitely not covering all the work they do, but it's gonna be nice to be able to show how much they are doing.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, so my name is Stevia Mukuzo. I just wanna give a little bit of background of myself before going to the presentation. So I was born in Congo, a place called Goma, and it's in Kivu. So I was born, I'm the third child in our household. I have my brother, my sister, and I am the last born. And I left Congo when I was two. We went to Kenya. And I came to the state in 2014. And when I came here, I came, so I left Congo to Kenya because of war and insecurity. But unfortunately, maybe, luckily, we didn't go to the camp. So we just stayed in Nairobi until when we came here. But everything that connects me to the student here, it's like because we all speak the same language. I know what they have been going through, even though I didn't have that. I didn't go to the camp, but I know how it feels to be in a camp. Cause I was in Nairobi and Nairobi wasn't my hometown and most challenges. So I was facing some more challenges there too. So today, I'm here in front of you to talk about the Congolese culture. I know you've heard like, "Oh, I'm from Congo." So if you hear somebody from Congo, you're gonna say, "Oh, yo, you speak Swahili, you speak French, you're like Jumbo, bonjour." Those are like couple of things that you've been hearing there and here. And today, I wanna tell you more about us. Oh, one more thing that I forgot. So recently, I graduated from UVM. I was doing global studies. And I was, so I was majoring in global studies and then minoring in French, cause I wanted my French to improve since I left Congo when I was young. So I didn't have a chance to learn in French. But here, I was like, "Okay, I wanna build on my French so that it gonna be perfect." Cause I never know where life gonna text me, so. So DRC, I hope it's visible enough, right? So before I was born, Congo was called Zaire. So that is the name. Zaire was the name. That was when presidents, wait.
It's almost each technology that I gave you a bad.
You gave me this. It doesn't matter. Okay. Okay, so while this first president here was ruling, that when Congo was called Zaire. So after Zaire, it became the republic, the Democratic Republic of Congo, when Kabila the father, when Kabila the father was reigning, so that when the name changed. And then after that, Kabila the son took over and the name stays. It was still DRC Congo, which is different from Congo Brazzaville. I hope you have heard, "Oh, I'm from Congo Brazzaville, I'm from Congo Kinshasa." So there's two Congo, but actually Congo Kinshasa is the big Congo. And then Congo Brazzaville is the other one next to it. And then now currently, we have Chisekedi, who is the new president. So a little bit of the natural resources that Congo has. We know that Congo is in the central part of Africa. And we have a lot of resources of which Congo should be considered as a country of milk and honey, right? But unfortunately, it's not actually a country of milk and honey. There's a lot going on, there's like gold, cotton, copper, iron, diamond, a lot of them, they are there. So here in Congo, there's a map of Congo here. And I have couple that shows like exactly the places where we got like some resources around. We have like all the Kivu, where I was born, Kivu region. That way, we have like the gold. That way, we have like the most area where there's conflict like right now. And it's Kivu. Kivu, it has like Goma, Bukavu, their names over there. Goma, Bukavu, Butembo, Uvira. It's like, there's a lot of small like towns in the Kivu side. And a lot of student here actually come from that area. And went to refugees camp like in Uganda, which is just next to there. And then there's also Tanzania, which is there. There's also Burundi, a lot of them. Most of them even were born there. They are Congolese, yes, because parents are from Congo, but they are born in Burundi and Uganda and Tanzania. And actually Kenya, where I was.
Stevia, can you show, do you know where Brazzaville is on here?
Yeah, over there, Ruwefu, come to the Congo. Yeah, that is Brazzaville.
North of Kinshasa?
Yes. Cause Kinshasa, this is Kinshasa, the capital city. And then there's Congo Brazzaville here, of which is the small Congo. Yeah. So ethnic group, official languages and national languages. We know that in Congo, French is the official language spoken at school. Everybody who goes to school must know how to speak French, because you start from kindergarten, you start like learning how to speak French, because Congo was colonized by the Belgians. So French is the official language. And this national language, you got four of them, but two of them are the mostly spoken. There's Swahili, there's Lingala, of which a lot of student here speaks Swahili. So if you are a Congolese, unless you come from Kinshasa, I hope you remember where Kinshasa is. Kinshasa, they don't speak Swahili. They speak French and Lingala. But Swahili is spoken like white wine. The population, right now, I did some little bit of research since I left Congo a long time ago. So, but I did a little bit of research. And that is the amount that I saw, like that the number, actual number of the population right now. And they are just, we know that there's mining because of the resources that they got. They do mining, agriculture, fishing, and some business actually. And then we have some that then have jobs because of lack of opportunity. So over there, I have couple picture of, the top one is the Congo River. They do some fishing, because we have like a lot of rivers in Congo. And there's like market, people create their own jobs to kind of, you know, survive. So actually, it's like just outside, you gotta create, we don't pay tax. So you just go, if you find like a spot outside, put your tomatoes and cabbage and start selling. And people gonna buy and you have something to eat at the end of the day. There's a little bit of mining. People normally do that just to survive and to have money. And unfortunately, you can find even young children going to mine, of which I know it's bad. People trying to work hard to kind of fight and advocate for children rights. But unfortunately, people need money, so they can't do it. If you can afford money to take your kid to school, so you gotta have them, you gotta have them help you look for money. So it doesn't really matter of your age, everybody go and start to look for money. This is like trying to extract gold from the ground. Here, this side, I have like marriage, dowry, divorce, wealth and death. For marriage, I can say in Congo, marriage is all about female and male, only for that. If you like, you're like sex, getting married, people gonna try to avoid you. People will not talk to you, people even stole you. So when people does that, they normally keep themselves like in secret. Don't show it to the public, because they don't want rejection from the other population. Dowry is a must, because when you get married, so a guy or the man has to give, have to give the family of the groom, have to give them wealth, like house, money. So they normally like buy like the whole village and bring to you, they gonna buy even chairs, table, everything. So if you're a girl, if you're a parent and you have like more girls, so you consider yourself wealthy, because you count, "Oh, how many girls do I have?" So you start counting goats that gonna come to your house. So whenever you give a birthday, like this is a girl, you say, "Oh, thank God, I know I'm rich." But when it's a boy, you're like, "Oh, I know, I gotta work so hard." So divorce, divorce is not allowed. Divorce is not allowed, because it's considered shamefully. And people try to avoid that, because if a girl divorced, they're gonna blame the mother, saying that you didn't educate your girl right. So that's why she doesn't, you know, she's not good over there. So even though you go home, your mom will take you and take you back. It's like you have to stay here. So we condemn you, stay there until you die. So that's why people don't allow divorce. Girls are considered as wealthy, I say that. Most girls are wealthy. The more girls you are in the household, the more wealthy you are. Death, death is normal, but not always. Why? Because some people, like in my culture, people say that unless you're old enough, that when you're supposed to die, if you die, you're not old. That means there's something that make you pass away. So people gonna investigate what made you die. People will not just like let it go, so.
But marriages arranged, for the most part, or?
Depend, depend with different ethnicity, because some don't really like, if I meet you, we like each other, we can go and tell the parent. Whereby some other parent agreed and forced their kids. And this has been improving by time, because like I said, like my grandma, for example, didn't get married. She got married when she was 12. And she didn't even know the husband. The husband came home, so, and they were like over there like playing, and she didn't know that they came for her. At the end of the party, everything, they told her, "Oh, you need to follow that guy and go." And she was crying going, but she didn't have any choice. So it depends with where you're coming from. Gender roles. We have men who are the head of families. They're supposed to be the protect of the families, they're supposed to work so hard to protect them, to care for the family. Women are the housework whereby they deal with cooking, shopping. And most of the even, women are cooking in the kitchen. Some men cannot even enter in the kitchen. They have to stay, if they need anything, like, "Can you bring me that cup? Can you bring me this?" They can't go in the kitchen. It's really bad. So they just have to stay like in the sitting room. Of which, again, women are supposed to give birth, so if you're married, you're done. So just give babies as many as you can, and you're gonna be a happy woman. So teaching young children, so. The mother will be there like teaching, "Oh, you are a man, oh, you are a boy, you need to do this, to do this, to be a successful man when you grow up. You are a girl, you need to do this, you need to do this, to be a successful woman when you grow up." So that is the role of each of them. Religion, Christianity is the biggest religion whereby it's just like Protestant and Catholic. All of them combined is like 90%. A lot of them are like Christian. And Islam is just 10%, not a lot of them are Islam. So. And they say that the traditional practices, even though you are a Catholic, even though you are a Muslim, but you have also these traditional practices that everybody, all the Congolese does. Well, I know, but. For example, like if you're sick, the first thing in your head, you won't go, "Oh, I need to take like painkiller or something." You're okay. I know that leave behind my kitchen. Let me go and see what it can do for me. You take it and you put in water, trying to mix and drink, you see. Before even thinking of going to the hospital. So that is like the first thing. And they believe, and maybe it works, so. Young boys might be circumcised. It's a must. All the men at the age of two, you have to be circumcised, like the latest two. When you're born like six months, you have to be circumcised. So it's like the whole country does that. Transportation, the fact that the country is big and some road are good, some road are bad. We have train, we have bikes, bicycles, we have cars, buses. And also we have plane even from move from one state to the other, because the country is vast and not all roads are safe, especially at night. People are afraid to be killed or to be murdered or to be, you know? So they prefer to like travel, even like to go to Kinshasa. If a person is in Goma, like in the Kivu part, right? You remember where it was? And then going to Kinshasa. People normally go with the plane, they cannot drive, because it's, there's not any safe road for that. There's also boat, I mean, to go from one state or one village to the other, you have to go through a lake or ocean. Alternative transportation, these are like among towns. There's like bicycle and there's this one here, which I really miss, Chicudu. It's a man-made bike, bicycle. And it really carries a lot of weight. You can't even tell, but it does a good job. And people normally does it, when you buy something at the market and it's really heavy, you just go say, "This is cheaper." If you pay like in a bus, it's gonna be expensive. But this would be like maybe five dollar. Of which, if you go to the bus, you're gonna pay like 15 dollar, so you prefer this. And also, people use their strength. You see that guy over there? He say, "I'll take off this, let me go." So he doesn't need any help, so he's gone. Education system, we got kindergarten, that is three years, from two years old to four years old. We got middle school from plus one to plus six. That is when you're six years old up to when you're 11 years old. We have high school, that is six years also. When you're 12 years old till the 17 years. That mean after 17, you're done with high school, you go to the university. We don't have colleges back home. Once you're done with high school, you go straight to university. And university depend on what you wanna study. You wanna do three years, there's graduate. You're gonna have a diploma for that. If you want two more, there's license, that's how you call it, and then doctoral. So I was trying to translate them, but not really. But I felt like this is good, to have it the way they are called. And no college at home and school is very expensive. The studying from kindergarten to the university, people pay school fees and not all the parents can afford paying school fees. And that's why you find most Congolese that come here didn't actually want, go to school, because money was a real problem and they couldn't afford, yeah.
Stevia, where would most students go to university if they were able to go after, you know, living in the Congo?
Like back Congo?
Yeah.
If they go to the university, so for those who are like in the Kivu region, they normally go to Bukavu, with they have like so many university over there.
Okay.
So there's a lot of them over there. But the problem again is money. Money is the real problem. Cause a person will say, "Okay, instead of me finishing high school and then again go to the university, I better look for a job." It doesn't matter which kind of job and try to survive. Cause even jobs are not like guaranteed 100%. So people like try so hard. So you find even most people like, everybody wanna go out, everybody wanna move to try to survive, to move and look for a job or, you know, fight for their life outside, because people there are really struggling. Yeah. Reason for living home. So there's political reason, social and economical reason. So political, the conflict between different political parties. So with this, I meant, I would give you a little bit of politi, I'm not a politician actually, but I would try and please bear with me. So I know even before I was born and Rwanda, you remember where Rwanda was, right? On that map, you want me to go back or you're good? Okay. So Rwanda, the president was called, and he's still today, Kagame is the president. So they had this argument with Mobutu, who was Zaire, right, before? So they had this argument that, "Oh, we're gonna collaborate and I want a part of Congo." And they're like, "Okay, good." And they were good friend, everything went good. But when it came time to take now the land, that was the Kivu part, the president was like, "Uh-uh, I never told you that." And now he was really mad, he didn't like that. And now the conflict started, "I want this, I want this, I want this." And since then, things are not being so good. Even after the genocide, so many Rwandese left Rwanda, went to Congo. And now, that would you call them, they are Congolese, yes, but they are called Nyamulenge, because they are like originally from Rwanda, but they grew up in Kenya, I mean, in Congo, right? So they gave them a mountain whereby they settled and they give birth to babies and they are there. But still, people in Congo don't consider them as Congolese, even though they were born there. And that has been the conflict, "Oh, look at your face, you're not one of us." And they're like, "But I was born here." Like, "No, no, no, we don't really care. Look at your face, look at mine." "No, no, 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 you're not." And that is a been like a conflict forever. Maybe God will come down and will help. Social conflict, there's this conflict between ethnic group, because Congo has like this, a lot of ethnic groups. And people kind of put that differences like on the table. Like, "Oh, um, for example, me, I'm a Mushi." So I'm a Mushi, you are a reggaeton, we don't associate, right? Or maybe you, only the Mushi are like exiting or they're only professor at the university. Look at us, we are nothing. So those little conflicts make it like something big and people don't really work as one. Of which they are supposed, you know, to be working as one. But unfortunately, there's a lot of issue over there about the cultural ethnic groups. Economical problem, there's poverty, which has been a problem for a long time. Even though the country is rich, there's a lot of resources, but unfortunately, poverty still affect the people. Lack of employment, there's no jobs. People trying to go outside the country to find for jobs. And you see like, especially when there's like the resources like gold, cotton, you know, all those resources. People outside actually are going to extract and to buy it cheaper there. They buy it at cheaper, maybe five dollar, a lot of gold. They go out, "Look at your cellphone." They're all made with what? You know, right? And it was made what? It came from Congo, right? But even the Congolese themselves, they don't have those kind of phones. They use, I don't know what they use. Why? Because of poverty. They need like a lot of help. But unfortunately, it's something that it need to be built on, little bit by little. Congolese coming to the US. So here they are, they're like, "Oh, no, we maybe because of all this problem, we want something different and let us find a way, a place to live." So some of them come here through resettlement, of which it's a process. You have to move from your country, you go to a second country, you try to declare yourself, "Oh, here I am, I came here because of war insecurity, blah, 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 so I need help." And now the UN has to intervene and find out if you really need this kind of help. And if they find out, then they have to give you a third country, though it's like here, Europe, you know, to try to help you recover or be a better person. There are some who come here through personal visa, student visa, most of them, most Congolese, especially people who are in Kinshasa, that don't experience insecurity or war. Because Kinshasa, people in Kinshasa are stable. They live like a good life compared to other region, maybe because it's a capital, I don't know. But people over there, most of them come here through student visa. They come, "Okay, I got my money, so I gotta go and study." So they come here and they try to, you know, come out. Family renification, some of them are being renified through the UN or through personal visa. There's lottery. I know you know the game, people play it like annually. And if you win, they give you visa, you know? Have you ever heard of that? Yeah, so a lot of them here, especially in Vermont, I know a lot of family who come with the lottery game. So I don't know how to play it, but I'm learning. Life in the US and challenges. There's culture shock. So that is the first thing that everybody faced, even me, I faced it. And I was like, "I'm done." But thank God, I got good friend who supported me. Especially at school, with no friend, I was like, "Oh, my goodness, what am I doing here?" Especially in a classroom, I find myself, I'm the only black person. I was like looking back and forth and like, "Oh, my God, am I dreaming or something?" But thank God. Culture shock, there's a lot going on in the state. But people need to like have courage and confidence and know who they are. And, you know, just like say, just be positive and try to learn every single morning. There's language barrier, I know. Language barrier, I myself, I don't know what to say about language barrier. But I learned English from Kenya, but I know it's hard to learn a second language, of which I'm here especially to help my younger student who school here. I normally tell them, "If I made it, you can make it. I don't want you to stop just at a high school level. Go far, dream big. And if you say, you can do it." And I hope these are great kids. I believe in them. Different in the education system. Back home, the education was different. Why? Because school was like halfway, from 7:30 to 6:00. And then from 1:00 to 4:30. So maybe because the resources were like a little, cause like professors who gonna be there in the morning gonna be different from the professors in the afternoon. So like two different, it's one school, like two different programs. So it'll be like, "Oh, I'm a morning session, oh, I'm an afternoon session." So when people come here, it's like a long day class, like, "What's going on? I'm tired." Already at noon, you're like, "Oh, my God, when are we going home?" So it's something that people doesn't know, but it's kind of come with time. Timing, there's like six hour differences, especially for new arrivals. They normally take time to kind of switch to the new time. When time to wake up, they really are feeling asleep. In the classroom, they're snowing, because they feel like it's at night. But over here, it's like during the day. So you get a time to, so a little bit of shake. Language comparison at Winoski, this, so I was trying to compare, to see like how big, I was trying, so this chart here represents like the English speakers, like the whole district. So this half, I like the English speaking. And then the other half, I was like, this is like the Nepal, Somali right here. There's Swahili right here. And then Vietnam, there's Maimai here. And then this is Karen and then Arabic around here. And then here, I took away the English speaking. So I just have like the student whose English is their second language. And I have the French here and Swahili here. So these two people are combined together and I'm like a mother to them. Not a mother actually, a mother, I don't know. So I was trying to see how interesting this chart could be. And I was like, "Kristen, maybe you can help me find this, cause I feel like this is cool for people to see." You know, how new American come here and like, you know, even though it's hard, but they try, they, you know, struggle a lot to stay in school, that's something positive. And there's Nepal here, so with their percentage. I find that that one could be a cool thing for everybody to have, look at. Yeah. Way to help new families. So the first one, I had to be patient with new families, cause I feel like sometime a lot of pressure can make them like shut down. They don't wanna share anything, they don't want anything to do with anybody. But as long as we are patient, especially you try to tell them, "Oh, you can do it, you can do it, you can do it." So it's gonna take time, but So it's gonna take time, but they will, everybody will find their way out. Follow-up, I feel like most family will need like monthly follow-up, whereby we can just go and check. I normally tell Kristen, oh, I'm going to check on a family, cause I'm like, this is my only chance, I have not my only actually, but this is my first chance that I have to like being like in the community, cause I have like my evening, I can go to a family, just, oh, hi, I just came to check on you. And you find a family need this, they, they feel like, most of them come here like, nobody they know, nobody, they feel like they're lost. And they feel like the family of the school is like their first friend, like teachers and, you know, the whole school community is like a family to most family. So when I go there, I normally represent the school, I'm like, I'm here on behalf of the school, so. And we can talk the same language to show them, oh, the school loves you, need you, so if you have anything, reach out, this is what we wanna help. And you, you know, I tell them like available resources that you have, and if I have a question, I normally ask Kristen, hey, Kristen, how do you do? Because I don't know so much, so I ask. Encouragement and motivation, as I say, most need like motivation, keep on motivating them and tell them that can do it, even younger ones. They need to be motivated, because especially like, most of family came home feeling that all is done. They cannot be, they cannot do any better anymore, so it's like, oh, let me just go. But as long as you keep on talking to them, they feel like, oh, there's a room of improvement, oh, I can do this. You give them like, oh, so many opportunity, then they can pick one on each, so it depend on how open that person could be. Uh, English classes, I myself feel like my most parents could learn English, of which I know there's like adult learning, I know there's so many English resources around Vermont, Burlington, but I feel like maybe Winuski could be something nearby, cause most of them, transportation is a big problem. So if you got anything, anything like nearby whereby family can come easily and go home, that will be better, even an hour, that will be great. Because most parents struggle a lot, cause younger kids don't wanna translate to the parent actually. They're like, oh, mom, you don't understand, I'm done with you. And mom don't like that every time, be like, okay, I don't, can you just translate, can you just, and then they tell, can you just go? Then leave them, those kids don't listen to me. So I'm, I'm like, okay, mom, I got you, I got you back. But at the same time, I'm like, you know how to do that? So English classes are very important. And maybe parents too can read letters, cause most of them come here at school with letters. Sometimes I ca- I tell Kristen, what is my role? Am I helping the student, am I helping the parent? Parents will come with a letter, a lot of letter, I want you to make me understand. So I will start reading from one to another and then translate, this says this, this is a bill, this, this, so it's like a lot. But if they have like an English class, they could improve like, you have a little bit of knowledge, they can even read a small letter by their own. And that will help them be dependent. Setting good, good examples, I feel like we should be the one having good examples to most of the families. I, I like working hard, if you tell them that, oh, you need to work hard, so they're gonna see that in us. Not just telling them, oh, you need to work hard, you need to do this, but if they see us being like a role model, they will be learning from our, our action, so they learn and they can be even better citizen and do even good things. For example, I'm not trying to criticize of anything, but just a super story, I have my friend, who is an American friend, and he didn't finish school because he didn't want to, he was like, oh, school is very expensive. I don't wanna pay my school loan, so I better look for a job like in manufacturing, just, you know, there's a lot to do. You see that perspective? If somebody come from Africa here, they're like, oh, home, I didn't have this education, though it, it doesn't really matter how much I'm gonna pay, but I will try hard to pay and then to go to school and then later on, I can work and pay for my school fees. You see those two people, right? This one is like taking things for granted. But if that other person, look at how hard this person was doing, be like, okay, let me learn from this and take that as an opportunity for me to do better. But if you find all your friend are like, oh, I don't want this, oh, I'll just chill out. So how a new American really gonna learn from us? You know what I mean? So it's like, it's that to start with us, to show good example on what you do, just not like saying, but our action to be louder than our word, that will make like American the greater. So conclusion, I conclude by saying, I'm happy to be a part of Winuski. This is my first year and this, I was so nervous, I was like, oh, my goodness, I've never presented to people I've never seen. I don't know exactly how I'm gonna conduct myself, but I'm happy I did it. So any question about school or home, like or family, uh, Winuski families, I'll be happy to answer. And thank you so much for listening to me.
Are you finding that the families that you work with are open enough to ask you for help?
Yes.
And ask you to help them?
Yeah, I can say so far, most of them are so, cause I never knew them. When I came here, I was actually making calls to introduce myself. This is who I am and I'll be helping you, I'll be helping. The first time I saw them was like the barbecue welcoming, that when I saw some of them and I again introduced myself. And after that, I did couple home visit to just like say hi for those parents who never had a chance to see here. Some of them are sick at home, some of them are taking parent or husband. So I had, I was the one who make a move to go home and see them. And when we talk, we laughed, and then after like a week, they became so friendly, like reaching out to me like, oh, I need this, I need this, I need this. Sometime I'm like, hold on, I gotta find out, cause I don't know exactly. So, but they are really reaching out.
So your work day went from eight to three to eight to eight to nine or ten?
Actually, I normally go home and then at around five or maybe six thirty, I can have like, I have like an hour, especially on Tuesday, to be honest, on Tuesday, that my day to have home visit. Yeah, on behalf of this, I've never told Kristen this, but this is from me.
Your presentation was fantastic, you did a great job.
Thank you.
In the challenges section, this might be a silly question, but is adjusting to the cold a challenge for families?
Yeah, especially for the cold, I was going like to, to tell them like, oh, to have like proper clothing and everything, if they need anything. I was having them here at school, we have a lot of resources. We have VRP too, which I reach out to and trying to tell them. Like sa- last Saturday, VRP was here on Saturday to help family, uh, have the clothing. So I was like reaching out to all families, telling them, you need to come and pick stuff. When we had one here at Winuski during our, uh, parent teacher conference, some of them went home complaining like, oh, it wasn't enough, it wasn't enough, Stevia, it wasn't enough, I was like, I'm no, but I'm, you know, next time, come, be the first one here. And they normally came, like they were the first one, and now I heard that, oh, we have enough, so. I feel good when they give me good feedback too, I'm like, okay, thank God, there's something going with God somewhere, yeah.
And the, um, the other thing you, you touched pretty heavily on is English classes. Um, are there, there are some being offered, right? Some are, do we have still the, we had an English class, uh, at one point here.
Right, we don't currently have an English class going at the school district. There are some through VRP and Vermont Adult Learning that are offered at, um, CCV and at the O'Brien Center. But that's something that I would like to-
Relatively local.
Right, yeah. Yeah, but that's something I'm kinda thinking about is how to get it back into the school and also possibly, you know, when we have space in a capital project, um, during the school day, cause there's so many families who come to drop their kids off or pick their kids up and might, you know, work second or third shift and not have time in the evenings to go to class, but might have access to it during the school day when they're dropping their kids off.
How successful was it when it was running here?
Uh, the pep workshops did really well, yeah, we had a lot of, um, a lot of new, new families coming in. So, and we moved away from the, the class model to a workshop model, so we have several workshops throughout the year, but it's not the same as the English class that was going on.
How do we, um, one, once again? Wonderful presentation, thank you for, and hope you know that we're not mean or evil or anything like that. We're quite friendly, and hopefully you can spread the word to the families that we're not mean and evil. And so, I wanna, I, I think one of the common theme that I'm hearing through a lot of the presentations has been the fact that, um, the additional challenges of our children being kind of like that liaison for their parents and, and the parents feeling the, the lack of, um, control over their children as much because of the language barrier. And I'm kinda curious, um, are there anything in an educational standing that we can help our, our, our students better understand, or is this something of a mentoring type program that we can do? I know that is one of the things, um, that I did with the student that I mentored was to make sure that they paid respect to their parents on, on that level. But I don't know if that's something that we can think about a little bit more systematically, um, in our system and or anything that we can help do that with our children, you know, so it's not on the burn. Like my biggest concern right now is that you're the focal point for a lot of this and how do we spread so that you don't burn out? Because I wanna see you here for a couple of years in the district.
Yeah, answering to that, I feel like personally me, what I do, I don't normally go to mom or dad on their side and the kid on their side. I normally, you know, have one family, all of us together, especially if I go home, we have all of us together. And sometime parent express to me like, oh, my kid doesn't understand, like my kid does this, that, this and this. And they tell me, okay, at school, go and find them and try to talk to them, maybe they will understand you better. So when I come here to school, I will find the kid, I will talk to him again and I will be like, remember what we talked at home? I, every time we talk, I really, I, I have to echo what we talked at home, so that it won't be like I'm talking on, uh, to mom on one side and talking to the kid on the other side, cause I want all of them to be like, you know, as one like this.
And I think it's that messaging that, that you're sending to the children needs to be confirmed by other teachers too in talking, in, in some way, like how do we engrain this with our heart mission, you know, with Winuski?
Yeah.
Like it's part of our culture to pay respect. And I get it, it is a tough responsibility for a lot of these, for the students to be that liaison when they can quickly see some of their other counterparts get to be a kid. And, and I don't know, and, and that, that's something that I think we should be thinking about as a whole from a curriculum kind of standpoint, what we can do to do better on that support? Because I don't want these childrens to ever look down upon their parents. And, and because their parents have done a lot of sacrifices to bring them here. And I'm, you know, and, and you're not the only cul- of cultural liaison to have mentioned, this has been a theme, um, throughout, um, the presentations, so thank you.
Yeah.
And go UVM.
I've got one more question, but I'm not convinced, Stevia, it's to you as much as maybe Kirsten, and that is, the conversations that we have had, there are some commonalities through your challenges with your communities here are not a lot different than the other liaisons that we've had in. Do you guys get together as a liaison group and talk about what you're dealing with within your own communities and how maybe common that is? And do you potentially get together with the Burlington team to have that same conversation? I don't know.
Do you wanna talk first or not?
Yeah, but I myself never like talked to the Burlington ones, so mostly I talk to my community here and my other liaison here. If there's something that like shocked me and I need to know how to address, I normally ask my coworkers, of which last year I wasn't here, so I know they know more than I do, cause they know like my community is even more than I do because they've seen them like, you know, for the past years. So if there's something that like shocked me and I don't know exactly what to answer, I normally ask them. But most of the time, it's like, there are some that are like common. Let's say language barrier is something common, it's like all of them face it together. Like culture shock, it's like all of them, I know the reaction can be different, but it's all the same.
And then, yeah, so the last two years, we've had annual trainings with the Burlington liaisons. So we've gotten the Winuski liaisons and Burlington liaisons and our on-call interpreters, um, all in the room. We, uh, the first year it was in Burlington, last year we had it in the library here. Uh, and it's really powerful, cause it gives an opportunity for, um, the liaisons in the larger community who are doing the same job, sharing the same families that are moving back and forth across the river to talk about what they're doing, the stresses of their jobs, complicated situations and how they address them. Um, and then also self-care, we try and touch on self-care because as Stevia said, she's, you know, at six o'clock at night going out doing home visits and working above and beyond and not necessarily clocking in for all of that. Um, and so it's long hours and, and stressful situations and dealing with, you know, secondary trauma of families that they're working with. So, uh, it's been nice to provide that, um, that space, and we've just done it once a year right now, but I think it's been nice to provide that space for the liaisons. And also like, um, my counterpart in Burlington, Maryam Minisham-Kating, who's the director of ELO there, um, she and I also participate and just get to, you know, talk to everybody and learn about that, what they're going through and try and, you know, come up with some solutions to help with some systemic, systemic problems, so. And we also do monthly liaison meetings where I touch base with them and I usually wind up having to have more than one, more than monthly, cause we have so much to talk about, um, where I touch base with them about how things are going and, um, what's going on and troubleshoot new problems and, you know, um, talk about what's, you know, to come and build systems.
I can let you hear that.
One more thing I wanted to, actually to, that I wanted to add, one of it was like to, you know, to be part of the Winuski community or may, or maybe a liaison, it's a must that you have like a big heart to actually listen to people. Because there's a lot going on that, when a parent come here for parent teacher conference, they cannot say it all. There's some question, they go with you at home and they just like lost and don't know who to ask until you reach out. That when they open their heart and say, there's a lot going on in their houses over there. Like a parent who like husband was paralyzed and she doesn't go to work, she stay at home and the school, the children are here. Sometime the teacher call be like, oh, this student is really sad, and when you're trying to reach on, why are you sad? And she started telling me what's going on at home, of which the teacher's been there the whole day, but she hasn't like mentioned that until when I come and ask, you know what I mean? So it's like for us to have that step, to do a step, trying to find out that when they open their heart, they know, no, not everybody's like talkative or not, everybody's like open to just like sharing, oh, this is what going on. Not everybody can say that until you reach out and try to find out. Yeah, so that's why, when I do it, I do it with all my heart, not like because I wanna get Kristen involved or get paid or something. Just you do it because, you know, you're called to help. Another thing that I wanted to say, I know this can be, I don't know exactly, but there's this issue about the bus thing. I've had so many parents talking about this and I don't know exactly how to respond. I wasn't here last year exactly, but parents are complaining about, oh, look at, the snow is coming. How are we gonna go get to school, how are we coming to school, especially our young children? Are they gonna slide in the ice, what gonna happen? Why don't they provide a bus, blah, 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 I'm like, I don't know exactly about that, but I don't know if you guys can have like a straightforward answer for me to give it to the family, that will be so grateful.
I think we have that, we have that for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the short answer is we do have a bus that runs. It's intended to take care of the winter, the worst of the winter weather and into the spring. Um, Vermont winters are fickle at best, you never know when, this is unusual to have this much snow early. When do we start, December?
December second.
Second? So when you start the bus running daily on December second, you hope, uh, even as a Vermonter, I hope the snow doesn't come until the middle of December.
Okay.
But you're gonna get one of these every once in a while. But the bus runs from December second into the end of March?
End of March.
So the end of March is long after the snow is gone or in the ground is starting to dry out, we hope.
Yeah.
So we, we intended to get the busing in there for the bulk of the worst of the snow days. And s- some years, it's gonna get all the snow days and some years, it's, we're gonna get them early, but, so.
But when you talk about the bus, you just mentioned about the bringing them to school, what about returning them home, like from school, from school to home in the evening? Cause especially this parent who was mentioning, oh, nowadays the dark start at around four, three thirty, so how are my kids getting home, they stay here for after school, so they leave here at four, four thirty. It's like terrible, or maybe I can stay with my kid at home, I'm like, okay, hold on, I will find an answer for you, so.
Yeah, and the original intent was to make sure that the, the students were able to get to school.
To school.
And getting home, there was, the, getting to school, there's a time to, that needs to start, right?
Yeah.
Getting home, there's more time to do that, so the walking home, I think, was kind of the, the thoughts we went through. And the first part of this has been a pilot to see how it goes and, and what we do with it. So this is what, the third year? This will be year three, so we're still learning what it is, but there has never been- But there has never been the return trip home to this point.
Okay.
So prior to three years ago, just context for history, there has never been a bus, a school bus system in Winuski. Students have always walked. And then we got information from parents and realized that the winter months, it would be super helpful. So we started a pilot of the bus three years ago and this is our third year running it. And it's just for the winter months in the morning and I don't know where it'll go from there. But it's great to hear that you're also getting information about getting kids to and from school. To school and then home.
Yeah.
In the dark hours, yeah. Thank you for sharing.
And the other component of that is that um when they started the bus program, it was really cost prohibitive. But because of our partnership with South Burlington, we've been able to extend the days. So like the first year that we did this, it was only January to
Forty-five days.
It's only forty, right, forty-five days. Last year we were able to extend it.
Seventy.
And this year in the eighties. And 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 part of it is, is that like I think if you encourage your parents to say, to have your kid, I mean, the kids are actually really well behaved. If you ever get a chance um to sit on the bus, I really encourage all members to sit on the bus. That they're really well behaved and it makes it easier for the South Burlington bus drivers. They think it's a joy. Now, there's also other things that I would love to see, um but there's the it's a balance of finding the money in the budget and also giving supplies and also passing the other things. Um you're right, we all want to do this, but we also in the long run have to pass the school budget to the town. And I think if you can help us communicate that to a certain degree and get people to willing to be patient and 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 know that we are doing everything that we can, you know?
Thank you.
Um but but I I want you to keep on providing that feedback because it's a feedback that we don't have from the community necessarily. And and this is a school board that I think will always listen and 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 don't hesitate to email any of us about what you hear from the parents or to Sean.
Keep asking the questions, keep getting the answers and don't, please, please pass them along so we can hear.
And and also, um I just want to comment, um your energy is unbelievable. We can feel it in how much you care and love. And and I I do want to make sure that you don't burn out and make sure that um you also know that we care. So tell us how we can help with your own professional development to continue your growth um here in Winuski. Um and and once again, I can't promise that we can do it, but we will try our best to make sure that um that we can help. And so we want to know that we care about you too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh let's see, next section here, public comments. All right, consent agenda, accept a motion to accept the consent agenda. That was listed, anybody?
Yeah, so huh.
Uh
Can I make some comments?
Did I was gonna say discussion?
There was some fabulous things in the superintendent report. There's a new reporting, report card. What do we call it now?
Transcript.
Transcript. That looked exciting. It looked like it really honored um the student and that it comes from the voice of the student. It's not just some bland piece of paper that it really talks about skills and and accomplishments and um who they are and what they're wanting to do and hear the things that they've done during their time in school to capture that. That's really powerful.
Thank you.
Have has has it got one gone out?
Uh a couple went out. There was a, I think, two to three students who applied early decision.
Okay.
That was the deadline.
That's great, because it seems like that it's a student voice versus it just being
It it is, and we were able to kind of work very specifically with those students to um get their voices into it. And now we're prioritizing the next group of seniors who will be applying, you know, November fifteenth and regular decision and January one and so forth to to get there. So I think it'll, it'll get even better with their voices incorporated it with time.
Will there ever be feedback from institutions who are receiving these reports? Because I think that that's one thing that public education is sort of bumping up against in um moving to a proficiency-based system is they're always afraid of what colleges are going to think, receiving different types of information prior from the old information.
So that's one of the things that our high school guidance counselor plural now with our second one. As part, yeah, as part of that process, that's what they do is they do a nice feedback loop with admissions to kind of ask them, you know, are there important things that you can let us know about our students' applications that could help, you know, on your end or could help our students and be more attractive to your university or college? Yeah, so there, that does happen.
It's in the, it's in the top of the um well, once, once he starts talking about the goals, I I it's in the like under curriculum in instruction and assessment in the consent agenda, consent agenda?
Page ten in the consent.
College and career readiness. There's an image of the transcript itself.
And it's really powerful when you start digging down into that. It's electronic, so there's links to student presentations. Not in here, no.
No, it's a PDF.
So maybe at some point we can bring that back and take a, take a tour through.
Yep.
Because this has been a a sticking point for many schools to move towards proficiency and transferable skills. And you highlight transferable skills, which our community gave us information about what they wanted, and it's in here.
Well, and that's why I think you, if you read the description, Jean, our new co-principal, was very uh grateful to all the folks that worked on it, you know, because it's been a long time coming. There's been a lot of technological challenges to overcome to make it what we want it to be. And and Jean has put a tremendous amount of uh leadership, attention units to this, this uh this fall to get it to this place. So we're very excited about that.
No, and the good news, he didn't resign like other high school principals did in the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was unfortunate, yeah.
I I I do recommend though that if you wanted to read um to what, when the principal resigned, WCAX did a story on it. But they also interviewed the admissions officer at UVM and and he provided some helpful um kind of feedback in in ways of how colleges are looking at it. And so I recommend watching that video, um just so that
What video is this?
It's just the um WCAX, um they did a story on the principal resigning in St. Albans. But because it was also over the high school transcript.
Okay.
Yeah, um so.
That's awesome. There were a couple times in here too that I saw people thinking um like the community work that needed to happen to make some of these amazing events happen that's in this report. Um and I'm missing the other two because I I didn't write it down when I was doing it. Um but like the Peace Jam celebration and
Indigenous Peoples Day.
Yeah, the, right, there's two of our staff faculty that have won um some grants for Vermont, from the Vermont Art Council.
Heather Nguyen and Nellie Maylin.
Yeah, um cross-country skiing's coming? What? That's fun. And then, of course, the Roland fellow, uh the Roland um conference where our students presented and got amazing feedback for their presentation, their content of what they were talking about, that it just kind of all came together. I've heard it from outside of this school district.
I just got an invitation today asking them to come and present at another conference.
Nice. Nice. And if you get a chance, the video is really, really good. It's a fifteen-minute video, but it is well worth the watch.
Excellent.
I did have a question about the family student teacher conference. Um it it sounded like it went really well. And I got to participate as a translator, which really you don't want me to as a translator, but it was interesting. Um what happens to students who don't meet at the parent conference? Like what do you do with those students that don't have a parent conference meeting?
Um they do what they normally do, which is can try to continue to communicate in other ways, you know, whether it's email or phone calls. Um or a reference to a referral to the guidance office, you know, to reach out and try to connect. So it's just a continued persistence of
Is there academic performance that you kind of notice? Like are they the ones that might be struggling the most or are they really doing?
You know, I don't know. I would guess that yes.
Right, I
I don't know. And particularly this year, there's been such a dramatic increase in attendance at the, at the high school level in particular that it would be interesting to look at that now since attendance is up to see if it kind of shows more with a smaller group.
Right, and 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 whether there's interventions that we can, whether it's a cultural kind of aspect. But it seems like it's an interesting data point
Yeah.
for us to kind of just be aware.
Well, that was the other part of strategically changing the the format, but also the timing to get to those parents earlier in October instead of November for the uh the middle high school students.
Right.
Because that was always a concern was, you know, as a middle high school parent, you show up in November and your kid's been in school for three months and you're like, what? You know, you know, it feels like I, it's it's too far gone in some respects, especially with a semester-long class or something in high school.
Right.
So, uh, yeah.
But no, I wanted to applaud um first the changes on that and and making it easier on our cultural liaisons to do it all. But, you know, there's also some interesting things that we can now do and look at students who don't come and whether we should be um finding interventions.
Now that the number's smaller, right?
Right. And then I just want to um just congratulate on the comment on the ongoing equity work on having those courageous conversations because those are very hard to do.
Yeah.
And the next wave of like really integrating, learning from others and the work that you are are doing is something that I'm envious and hope that at UVM we can do.
Thank you.
So.
Awesome. Uh any other discussion? All those in favor accepting the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, next student report to the board. We'll move the uh real briefly on the report on the VSPA annual meeting. We had talked in the October meeting about the resolutions that the VSPA was going to adopt or not for the year, and they had some recommendations pass, do not pass. Um upfront, it basically went along the lines that they had in there. So the VSPA took on the ones that they had recommended passing, added them to the list of the ones that they they already had um of pieces that the the VSPA is chasing. Um there was a lot of discussion uh around the negotiations uh with the health benefits. And that is uh moving along and I think to mid-December timeframe. Each each group has their, the the
Finals report.
They've, they've got their final report in. Um still a chance to negotiate, but now the um negotiate, the um moderators, I think
Arbitrator.
The arbitrator has to pick one or the other, not a combination or piece of the both. So kind of forced both sides to come with something that could be potentially accepted. So that's ongoing. Hopefully we'll close before we finish our budget. Uh that's kind of the the hope. And then uh we had one of our Winuski students uh have a discussion about their time in school. Uh was extremely well um well-received. Uh the story was an enlightening one. The kid struggled early, had some bullying go on. That was, it went unnoticed because it was hidden very well, um even though teachers were on the lookout, finally caught up to it. Took care, he took care of part of it, so he was pretty good about that. Um in high school, just turned things around from the seventh grade. He's been through a full year at CCV and he's in his uh third semester with a three-eight uh grade point. So doing really well um against, I would say, against all odds in the seventh grade. So it was a pretty good story. Uh it was received really well.
He wants to go to Castleton after he finishes his two years at CCV, study psychology.
Yeah, and try to help kids that were in the same condition he was. May have a mentor for you.
Yeah.
A mentee for you.
And he presented down at the, the
In Lake, in Lake Maury. Yeah, to the, to the superintendents and uh superintendents and um school board members that were there.
Nice.
So, yeah, so that worked out well. A lot of the rest of it was on proficiency, get or getting to, getting to a proficiency model, what what's important to the community.
Portrait of a graduate.
Portrait of a graduate. What is it? Critical thinking, problem-solving skills, the the whole, the usual.
Well, what I thought was most interesting about the portrait of a graduate, it was remarkably similar to the process that the board went through eight years ago uh in the community neighborhood conversations and developing the end statement and the graduate expectations. You know, that really is your portrait of a graduate. And this was just a very specific process of how to do that, which had a lot of the elements of what you did eight years ago. So it was, it was very affirming, I thought, to to the work that had been done in the past.
For sure.
Good, thanks for highlighting that.
So all in all, uh another, it, that was an interesting conference, I thought, so. All right, um did you have anything else from anything you had seen there? So um the 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 next piece here that we have is the board development. We had talked in our um retreat back in September about what do we, what do we want to try to strengthen this year and and what do we do with that? And so student voice came up. And uh we've got Harry back. Uh if you want to join us at the table here, please. In a, in a very new role, uh for me anyway, to see you in this role versus with the, with the VSPA group. So welcome to help us, you're with Up For Learning.
Great.
Okay, and uh so it originally started out with, here's an outline of the things that we can do through time. And as we started thinking about it, as and had a couple of conversations, is what do, what are we really looking for here? Um and then, so Harry is here tonight just to listen to what it is, where we are, what it, because I think we are um significantly through some of the pieces that you had in in part of your work. So present your, your proposals. So um what I was hoping we can do here is have a discussion uh about student voice. What is it? Where does it come from? Uh how do we get it? Do we need it here? And then if there's something that Harry can do with Up For Learning to help us get to another step in a, in a different endpoint, um then maybe we can have you put something together and come back with, you know, how does that look? So to kick off that discussion, I think what I wanted to start with is um a a conversation around the table first about what we think student voice is and how that, what it, what we believe it is and how does that manifest itself to us as a board? I don't know, um we'll start. Alex, you want to start on on your end? I just, I want to take this one around to have that um just what, what do we believe student voice is and how does that manifest itself to us?
Student voice to me is giving them an opportunity to be authentic and be true partners to the process as leaders on this board. Um how it looks is, is that we respect their time um in a way that also gives them credit for the work that they're doing because um it is extra time for them. But they need to see the authenticity, authenticity of their feedback going into action. Otherwise, we get them to be missing at at points. Um they also need to see themselves as true, i- if we're doing it from a representative standpoint of having voice, they need to be able to get feedback all the way from K, K or in pre-K even to twelve, all the way and be that true voice. Um and I think if we do it well, they will understand truly what civic engagement and leadership is about. That's off the top of my head at the moment. I'll let you all go.
That's good, that's good. This is the discussion rolling for sure.
I think growing kids to learn skill sets to be their own, um to be equal partners in their own education. And where I, how I sort of see authenticity is for them to be able, for the, what's happening on their inside is in, is incongruent is um in harmony with what's happening around them in the outside and being able to um really get to know themselves in both of those worlds. And I think that if, if we're allowing them voice, we're also training them how um to be who they are in relationship with others in a social, in a social grouping. And um how to have those conversations about what matters. So because there's a skill set to asking for what you want. There's a skill set for advocating and there's a skill set for knowing what the container is and where, where to push those boundaries and whether to be a part of that, you know, and and that that tension between this. So I see it as a helping kids learn how to be seen and heard um throughout their time here. So that when they get to the place in high school, um they have leadership. Um and a strong, a Um, and a strong, a strong voice that is, that benefits our communities and our democracy. You know, that just keeps adding value as they move along, cause they've added it from inside and they can add it out.
How we create an agenda that's, um, facilitates someone from, who's a student actually participating. Like I look back at our agendas and try to envision myself being seventeen and think where I would jump in. And it's hard for me to figure out where I would actually talk, given our, the current structure of our agendas. And so, making sure from the beginning, we're constructing these meetings, that it really is a way that's inclusive from the very beginning. Um, the second thing I'm interested in is the voice beyond our board reps. Like you mentioned earlier about who's not getting a conference. I would love to know, like, the stu- like, the students who are here, who are on our board are super articulate, like, high-functioning, like, great students. I'm curious about the students who, you know, don't make it to this seat and how we can incorporate what they're thinking and feeling and how that relates to policy governance here at Winuski School District.
I mean, I'm of two minds about this because I think that, I mean, there's it, I don't know what it means to invite student voice when students are not voicing or not asking us to be heard, right? What I, and and so I'm not sure, I don't know what what, is this for us? Is this what do, is this something that we think we need and why do we need it? Or is this something that the students are saying, we wanna participate in this? We wanna be a part of making decisions about, uh, what happens here from the board to whatever else. And I'm not convinced of that. I'm not convinced of that. I think that one of the, uh, when I've asked about the the absence of, I don't know what and how student organizations work here, but the absence of what, uh, what I have understood to be historically organized student clubs, after-school, those are the ways in which student voice is cultivated, right? And so if there's not that, given, and that coupled with the population that we have, I don't, I'm, I I don't know how that, I don't know how this voice comes to be, right? Because I think that that many students, for all kinds of good reasons, would imagine that they don't have a voice or that their voice doesn't matter, or that there can be any number of consequences for voice, right? Uh, and that that would be unpleasant, both, you know, sort of at home and outside. And so I I'm not, I'm not seeing any way aside from mostly the classes where the groups of students are making their presentations. But I'm not seeing any real movement, any student-led movement forward toward anything, right? There's no, you know, unrest has a place, right? If you have a bunch of high school students and nobody's grumbling, nobody's going to the principal's office and going to Sean, we want, something is off. So that's the cultivation that I'm interested in, that before we even get to us where the rumbling is, the voices are in the school itself that are saying, you know, we want this change, we want that. We, whatever it is, you know, so that somebody says, these kids are getting on my nerves cause they keep demanding X, Y, and Z and we can't do it. I, that's that, that's an essential part of being a a part of a community, right? An interested, active part of a community. And that's one of the most troubling aspects or absences that I perceive in this. Cause it ain't like, I mean, they got voices, trust me when I tell you, right? We're talking about constructive, you know, active citizenship and active membership in a community. And that's the part that I think is missing.
That's, uh, that's good. And you went exactly down the path. I've been thinking a lot about this lately. I've had this thing on my head, you know, how do we get the voice out of the students here? How do I get these students to talk to us? How do we get, how do we get them to tell us what their things are? At the point where our students are sitting at this table, it's gotta be a summary of something else that they did somewhere else that led to something that they drove, were able to drive change with, that then gets to us as a summary. My, my thoughts have changed completely that having these guys at the table, they're they're wonderful. We've had some great conversations and they've kicked in in places that I hadn't imagined. But I believe to Margaret's point, and I think that what I had heard was from the perspective of these guys sitting at the table, I believe that Student Voice has to be something we cultivate in, in the classroom, in the hallways, in the principal's office that is getting to things that cha- I would have loved to have known you when you were in your late teens and early twenties. Uh, we can have, talk about that sometime, but just that voice of, you know, the needing sometimes to have, I'll call it conflict, but it's just the voice to say that something needs to change.
Yeah.
Um, and how do we get to the point where we have that s- the ability of the students to have a path to get to their teacher, to get to their, um, group leads, to get to the principal, to say, these are the things that, or or even soliciting, having the principal solicit that information and having them look to talk. That is, to me, is the student voice we need to have in the community of the school. To, coming into us, I think that's kind of a summary of of the piece. Now, we can have them in a room for things like, does this policy, is this fair?
Yeah.
Tori?
So, in the absence of not having a structured student groups, clubs, committees, what you were speaking to, that there's only, I think there's just Peace Jam here. Um, what are the, what are the structures for them to do, to have voice and to and to organize in a way? And I ask that question because having students as our reps, I'm not sure where the understanding is that they are representing all student body, because what they were doing is just kind of reporting out to us of what's going on in the school. But what's the language and what's the practice in the building for them, for other students to know? You have student reps, like, and is this the place for them to come to tell us what's really happening for them? I'm not sure this is the place for that. Um, and I think that around policy, like, I think for, and I agree, that there's some spaces in between for them to use their voice. But it's kind of a dry place as for a teenager to be using your voice. I mean, it's a snoozer sometimes. We're super fun people, but this is still policy. So where are even the places for them to use their authentic voice and ask for change? And is this the avenue? Um, so there is something between us, and I like that y'all are using the word, this is the summary, like, this is the end game in a way. I don't know, um, but there's something in between that's missing that gives them, um, the structure and the citizen's relationship, you know, um, productive.
Group meetings, right?
Well, there's advisories, but that's also not our job to know about that, like, as a school board in some ways.
No, no, but I think, I think we're advocating that the students are able to use the voice and get things, at least have the adults in the in the school listen to what their, that voice is.
And and that's the power dynamic that's kind of wrong with our structure in one sense, is that we're making students come to us as opposed to us going there in their comfort zone, right? We have not made that effort. I mean, there's slow effort between some of us when we have time to go to advisory, but we're not really there to listen to them. We're just there to observe, like, how is it? But we've never given the space where we're going, you know, that's why I always suggested, is there a way that we can do a school board meeting during the daytime to show them what this is about versus an edu-
Give them a time to take a nap?
Take a nap, I get it. But 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 we, we haven't found ways to actually go to their space to allow a little bit of more authentic, you know.
But is the dynamic, though, that we wanna be the ones listening to the things that they have to say about the way things are going in the school? Or do we wanna be in, do we wanna be comfortable in the fact that the students do have a voice and it is being listened to within the school?
Those are, those are good distinctions, yeah, and I think that what I'm thinking about from us.
We're not gonna make that decision that, yes, we're gonna make this change.
Cause we have to know what the pur- what's our purpose? Where's the per- yeah.
Can I interject?
Yes.
I mean, first of all, let me just say, I've always found the Winuski School Board to be extraordinarily thought-provoking and in many respects, sort of on the cutting edge, just to give you that perspective, whether I was working at the School Boards Association or elsewhere. And when Sean first called me and said, we wanna explore Student Voice, my first comment was, well, Sean, actually, I thought you all, you were one of the examples I shared around the state when I talked about what was happening. And that was based on what I understood to be some practices around preparing students to come to the table and be as well-informed as possible, that I think largely the superintendent was taking or taking responsibility for. That's sort of just a context to offer, just cause I wanna respect your work and your thought process. But I also just wanna be confrontational for a minute here and say this. What I understand about pol- one of your responsibilities as policy governance is to engage your community. And I, and I don't know the nuts and bolts of what you've done over time, but I do know the stories of the living room conversations. And again, another piece that we shared around the state as a promising practice to really engage people's voices. So when you started talking about going to them as opposed to coming at, expecting them to come here to a structure that I would argue most adults have a hard time finding their voice in, uh, that's a big ask. And if you simply think your job is to expect people to come to you and fit in your model, then then you can stay there. Um, and I'm not try, I'm not trying to be, look, I I mean, this is not easy. I don't think, I I'm not coming to the table saying, I know how to do all this. You know, there are people in the field that have this, we are all, this is a learning edge for everybody. Is a learning edge for classroom teachers to figure out, how do I give young people a voice in their experience here? But where, the parallel I wanted to make for a minute is, have you asked stu- have you in, have, do you think of students as part of your commu- part of your responsibility in the context of policy governance, which tells you, you need to engage your community? You can't just go off as a group of five or six and make decisions. Do we do the same due diligence with our largest stakeholder? The group that we serve is our students, by number, by purpose, by outcome, any measure. So, to me, there's that fundamental question about, okay, how do you wanna define your responsibility around this? And I, and I, again, I'm not sitting here to say, you have to do it this way, because there's a landscape you can navigate. And I think ultimately, it is your decision to make. You are the the stewards of your community's educational system. Um, and that's why I started out by just trying to offer some admiration and respect to, for the work that I know you've done and continue to do. But I also think you reach a juncture, and it's a value-based moment, right? It's like, how, what is our belief about young people's voices? Is it something we have a responsibility to cultivate? Or is it something that they have a responsibility to bring to us? So, I know that doesn't necessarily get to a particular conclusion and a pathway, but I just wanted to at least put that on the table for your consideration.
And I think, if we really think what's the first step, it's not however the process is. It's really developing a trust so that they feel safe to voice. I think that's part of, I'm hoping that's what I'm hearing when I'm hearing Margaret's kind of concern, is that they haven't been able to voice. And I think we did at one point, we actually did focus groups two years ago with the middle school students and the high school students, which I thought was invaluable. Where I think where we lacked as a board is that we never gave a feedback loop back to the community, to them. We did a great job of listening. We developed a whole model. We analyzed the data, shared it with the superintendent, shared it with the high school. We never shared the, I mean, we shared it with the community in a newsletter, but we never actually, we backed and engaged with them to develop that trust that their voice was important, and this is how we're utilizing that information, right? Whatever process that we do is really, the first step is develop a trust so that they can start trusting our process that they have a voice to come out in the way that we kind of wanna make, but that's the thing that we have to develop. If we're asking about, why do we want Student Voice? We want Student Voice because we w- we want them to trust us to use that voice so that the policies that we are developing for them will be beneficial for them in some ways. And I think Margaret's totally right that we, a- at what point have we actually shown them that their voice mattered, that they trust to come out, whether it's through the student or, whether they have student orgs or whatever? Um, we haven't really gone out to them beyond that attempt at the focus groups. And even then, we, probably because it was a learning experience the first time that we ever did it, and that we never did the feedback loop. A- and and if I reflect back.
Well, I mean, I, I need to be brought up to date. I, when did things like after-school activities, student governance stop? When, when did, when did student council stop existing in student organization? Because that's where, that's where you learn governance. And so, what, that's, which lays the groundwork for Student Voice. That's a huge absence, and I don't know whether we, that happened cause it happened, because there was no interest, whether this is a conscious effort because of whatever factors exist in the universe that these, I mean, the student council, I I don't, I don't even know, how does it, that not?
It dissolved because of lack of participation and migration of students from that group into Peace Jam. And Peace Jam kind of became the de facto, but their focus was not the same as a traditional scoo- student council.
Right.
So that's happened in your, since you've been here?
Yeah, that probably all started maybe five, six years ago.
Cause there was a student council in the elementary school, and for those kids who kind of went through that process, not that it was perfect. But there was a huge disappointment that there wasn't something like that in middle school. You know, there was a, a gap, yeah.
Just a quick comment on governance. One of the things we're seeing in high schools around the state is that traditional council models only bring a certain demographic forward, that it's typically successful students who have the resources, supports to meet before school or whatever it might be. So one of the models that schools are developing is anybody can come to the governance table. You have to make a commitment and they build it around what works for those students that are interested and come. So, I'm just sort of throwing that into the mix of your conversation to say, there are even different models to think about how to, how to offer that governance.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree completely.
Well, the good news is build it from the bottom. We don't have anything to mirror off of, but but to create that space. Still our job. I was also wondering, my question is, where is the space for their voice to influence decision-making? I don't even know where that space exists. And I don't know if it, I don't think it exists here to influence, just to.
I think that is the student governing body.
Right.
To get those issues on the table and have that discussion, I would think. That's, that's historically where I think it has been.
Yeah, I mean.
Some get a little more radical than others.
Yeah, the only place it really, uh, tangibly lives right now is in the advisory rep. And then this is the first year where there are, I think there's four or five high school students on the middle, uh, and middle school students on the middle high school leadership team.
Oh, good.
And, yeah.
Are they, though, bringing a collective voice to that meeting or are they bringing it as individual?
Yeah, they've only had like one or two meetings with the, with the students. It's very, very new.
That's wonderful, though, it's true. Yeah, that's great, and an advisory board.
To me would be, okay, so what are the structures that you're gonna build into a dynamic like that where you're bringing, you know, young people to the table? Are there mechanisms for them to, you know, get input from the student body, right? I mean, as the first one.
Right, and it's advisory board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the two reps on the middle school, just the middle school leadership team.
Uh, middle high school.
Middle high school, okay.
Yeah.
But does that voice, does that voice have a space or a place in the advisory? I mean, is that, is that one of the?
Oh, yeah, they're designing. It's, it, they're designing the half-days, um, that are advisory-based with Lindsay Cox, who's the advisor for that group.
And is that the place to take on this collection of the voice of the student from that point? Then you've got a larger body. Then you've got a larger body.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I would go back and start at even of a higher level, I guess, where, you know, I feel like Margaret was talking a little about, and it's come up a few times. Like, what, what is the board's purpose of student voice? You know, are there particular responsibilities, you know, of, of that stakeholder group as po- as, um, Harry was referencing, that you identify very specifically, that you want student, um, you want students to answer some questions for you about that? And/or are there those structures like, whether it's, it's a new kind of student council or the advisory, where you have them and come report out to you? And then that informs your policy decisions, your financial and advocacy decisions, uh, over the course of time. But I think the tricky part is, number one, what's the purpose? What do you guys need to know from students? And then what are the structures that need to be in place, you know, and turning to me and saying, if this is our purpose, come back to us with some, some structural options to, uh, make the flow of that information back to you, uh, real.
Cause I, I think it's, it's twofold, I think. Um, one being, in some of our discussions, the voice of the student, and, and again, we've got a couple of good ones here to, to have that, is, is we don't have that perspective in some of our discussions. How the policies impact them, how certain decisions we're looking at would impact them. But at that point, it's the voice of the students in the room. The report to the board, I think, would be powerful if it is more a collection of, uh, the things that are, that they're working on in the school, not sports scores, things going on, but rather, uh, the things, the, the common topics in, in the advisory that are, are kicked around as far as either changes required. If everything's going good, it doesn't make much of a story. It's where, it's where things need to have changed, that, that the student should have some level of voice. And I don't know if that's where in the advisory, but if it comes here for solving a problem, this is not the place to do that.
A means issue.
This is, yeah, a means issue, this can't be the place that that comes to, because we're not professionals at that.
I knew that, I would want the voice of the students to more understand the qualitative of meeting our ends.
Yes.
And, and, and so like, even them sharing the good things that are happening is also a positive, because it, it gives me a better view to enhance our understanding. I mean, I love numbers. There's no doubt that I, 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 I love numbers and want that, but I also don't think we have qualitative components to tell the story. Them being able to voice some of the qualitative components of the ends allows us to better communicate to our other stakeholders. That's what I see the purpose in some ways of the student voice.
Is to corroborate that these things are actually taking root and taking place.
To triangulate my data points.
Well, the interesting thing too is that our end statement is about productive, successful, and engaged citizenship. And so they can give us great information about where are you experiencing, how, what, what could be added? What is, what is your experience around those endpoints? What do you, what do you think about that?
So that's a whole different focus for?
Cause that's what our job is, is to measure the statement, right? I mean, that's, we're here to do that.
Okay. But that gets back to the whole concept of authentic student voice then, because if you invite a group of kids to the, to the board to come and they're gonna, they may not give you, uh, the, you know, it, it may be a filtered, uh, presentation. So, what I, I, I like what you were saying earlier, Alex, about like, how do we go to students, or how do we create environments where, you know, you can really, uh, they feel safe to really tell you. And then, when they do, what do you do with that? So how do you frame requests and questions in a way that you're not sitting there and going, oh my God, now I have all these means things that I'm worried about that I feel as a board member, we should be addressing, but it's not really your role. So, how do you keep it at a ends? Well, at the same time, that I'm getting the, the, the means information as well, and the principals are and others, so that we can work on those and report out on them, up to you.
So that's a very different type of reporting than what they have been doing to this point, right?
The last one is really.
I'll, I'll give you the last one, there's a huge step.
Somehow we got them to do it. And, and it helped me evaluate our ends in one sense of how our policies are not, maybe we still work, need to work on some communication issues.
Are you talking about the, the conversations we had?
No, 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 I'm talking about the last, the last school board when you weren't here, uh, for the, the latter half. They, like, we learned things like, like, they didn't know that they, they could go to Sean and the high school about paying for books for, and they take the CCB classes, do enrollment classes, because they were paying for them on their own. So there's like, not that that was a, I mean, that, that's finding that fine line on means, but from a ends component, I'm going like, how are we not making this available so that they can be access to this?
Well, and, is that one kid that vo- you know, so that's where you get into the, the representative piece too.
Well, and that's come up a couple times, where some, you know, when they voiced things and you felt like, but, but that has been available, like, that structure has been in place.
Right, and either, yeah, it wasn't communicated in the right ways to access them, or they just didn't hear, you know, whatever might have happened, yeah.
Part of it is, is I think it's because we don't, it, it goes back to what I talk about, the authenticity of the position. How can we put more authenticity and show them that this is something, how can we give them school credit so they take it a little bit, treat it like a school sport? You know, that's been my struggle with the, that position for the last, you know, three years. And that's why I keep on offering, how can we turn this into a flexible pathways project?
So are we looking to be able to craft and create environments for us to be able to ask students their experience and their, their, you know, where they are in this school in terms of what we want as a board and a community has said, when you leave this school district, this is what you'll be walking away with. Are we looking for a way to create those environments, like to get support, to be able to shape it in a way that allows us to discern between the means and the ends? And also, but be able to have it be a structured conver- you know, us going to them for these conversations?
I'm, I'm, I'm in the basement. Me, my, I'm, I'm primarily concerned about what I see as student apathy and complacency. That, and I do not think our students generally feel that they are part of a community in which they are deeply invested and, uh, in which they feel great pride. That, for me, is the bottom line, right? And how this community, how you, how we cultivate that in a, a group of students from very, very, very different, you know, sort of places in the, in the universe and languages and culture, how we get them to invest and feel like this is their place in a way that they wanna, they wanna make demands, right? They want to say, we don't like this, we want that, to go to their principal, it doesn't matter to me. They're remarkably silent, they, they don't make any demands. And that, that, I mean, that's what, that's what kids do, you know? They beat on the tables and they say, this is what we want, and you guys give us what we want, or else. That is, that is the silence, a deafening silence in this school district. And that, you know, whatever, I don't know how you get that.
Sean, is that, is that your experience, that students are not making demands?
From my own personal experience in high schools, it is, uh, it's less. Yes. And I think that a big portion of that has to do with culture. Uh, many of our students, over forty, fifty percent of our students in the high school are English language learners. And they come from cultures where that isn't, that's not encouraged, nor is it acceptable in most of those cultures to question adults about anything. Yeah. You know, and that's why student-centered learning, you know, seven, eight years ago, was at the center of this movement to, and, and to improve equity for students and, and, uh, agency and ownership of their learning. You know, because you put in the student center, and they get to make some decisions about how they wanna learn, what they wanna learn, and so forth, and that grows it. I, I would be curious to kind of measure, you know, you can kind of like, see it and feel it in anecdotal ways amongst some of our students as they've gone through the system longer. I'm not exactly sure how to capture that.
I, I think there is a data point in the community survey about like students saying how much this community cares about them. And it was at, last time, I, that's the one that bothered me the most, the last time, was that it was lower. And, and, and if we are truly giving student voice, as Margaret is saying, I think that score should go up, right? Because then they're feeling that their voice, we have a metric, and that, that survey's coming out again with results again pretty, pretty soon, right? And it'd be interesting to see if we made any progress. I mean, I think we have a little bit.
Yeah, we have.
We have in the last, and, and, but I think we can keep on monitoring that one. As ways of, to test, I mean, so here's the question, I got, here's the ends, I got an ends, right? I'm looking at how much does our community feel, like, our students feel that our community? And is this a means that you help us figure out how to get the student voice so that they know that we care about them? And we wanna make a difference in the ends, like.
Question becomes, how do we as a board ask for something that is part of the ends that will require us to go back and get the students to speak, to, to come forward, to come forward, right?
To Sean's point, this is a, a remarkably American kind of cultural request, right? And we are dealing with, you've got fifty percent of the population whose mamas and daddies are saying, don't you dare speak to adult, or having a pa- I mean, it, I, I think that we, on, on the one hand, I, I get it, cause voice is important. But I also think on, we are, we are making, and I don't know if it's reasonable or unreasonable, but the request we are making is relatively foreign concept to a good number of our students and their families, as Sean pointed out.
Yes, but, yes, but, they are here, they are gonna go to work here, they are gonna enter the workforce here. Part of being here is using your voice in a workforce and in the community around you. Tempering that with not getting the backhander from dad for back talking, but, understanding the difference, but is it incumbent upon us?
In my head, student voice doesn't mean a demand of for change. It can just mean like, hey, this is what's going on for me here. I think if we're not, like, conflating those two concepts, then it wouldn't violate cultural norms.
And, and to be fair, the citizen and, what's, the citizen and voice module that they're doing in their junior year, if you get to sit through, you actually see them start developing, maybe not to the extent that we always want, because of the American concept that they have to do. But it is beautiful to watch them start taking ownership and the pow- ownership of their own power, right? The hard part is, is whether we get to see that all the time at this level, right?
I just wanna make this interesting connection between us wanting them to use their voice and ask us for things. And then, when the cultural liaison was here, is saying, you know, we also wanted the students to also be thoughtful about their own parents. And be honoring their parents, to honor their authority and all of that stuff. So it is, it is, and it was teenage, right? I mean, it is a, it is a, it is not just teenage, it's, you know, the whole system, but how do we, with the skill building that goes behind that. I like that you brought in like, not just demands, it is just learning how to articulate your experience.
That's what adolescents do.
True, true.
I mean, for those of you who have had children, I can't imagine that you have lived through adolescence with no complaints, no demands. Like, okay, mom and dad, everything is great, and I'm so happy. It, that is a part of what it means to be an adolescent. And it's not, ah, but it's like, I don't like this, we don't like this, and we have a group, and we wanna do it this way, and you are asking us to do it this way, and we disagree. That, and that, that for me, that is the kind of voice.
To the exact opposite side of the coin with the same result, is we do like this, we need more of this, and that, that's where it needs to go.
Keep on keeping on, but say something, right.
So, how do we move?
One other, uh, thought here, which is, um, this idea of data driving your conversation with data. I mean, one of the things, just, and look, I'm a, you know, old white guy, so this is coming from a pretty limited point of view. But you, there's a culture in this, around this table right now, which is, you know how to speak for yourself, you're gonna jump in and make a comment. You may get acknowledged by the chair and get an opportunity, but you better know, you better have that skill set if you wanna be at this table. I, that's familiar to me. I don't care who it is, and I made this comment earlier about, I think most adults walk onto school boards and don't know how to navigate, and it takes some time. And most people will say something like, you know, it's like drinking from the fire hose for the first year or whatever. If you practiced a set, if you had a set of structures that were transparent, that were about, how do we talk to each other? So when an issue comes up, we know that we're gonna take a minute for each person to organize their thoughts. And we're gonna start by hearing from everybody before we pursue any one particular idea. I mean, these are sometimes called protocols, right? If that were there, not, I believe that young people, let alone adults around the table, would have a different opportunity to engage in this work. So then to just attach it to the one example of data, because I think, right now, and look, who, who among us as school board? I was on the board in Huntington where I live. I mean, I can honestly tell you, I rarely consulted anybody outside of my social group when I was thinking about issues. So, was I fulfilling my obligation to be a community representative? In some limited fashion, I was. So I don't know that we can hold students to an expectation that they somehow represent the whole student body. However, if we're gonna look at data together, it's not just about my opinion and the people I talk with and what I can bring to the table. But we can now look at a set of numbers and discuss them from multiple points of view. And I think that's a very different way to go at whatever the question might be, building trust, uh, some of the other reference points that you made from the surveys. I mean, I think you have the building blocks to do it. I think the question is, do you wanna institute a set of practices that will move you toward, uh, I would say honestly, giving everybody a sense of more voice in the process, and I think certainly young people. But there are some limits to it. I mean, I think your conversation is very insightful. I mean, I do think governance is one of the few quotations I ever came up with on, on my own that I think is right on, governance is not an instinctive act. It is a very awkward and somewhat con- not somewhat, constraining role to figure out how to navigate. So given all that, I'm just sort of pushing back and saying, are there structures that you could institute that would go some way toward giving voice to young people in your process? And I do believe giving voice to all of you, because I think that's always a challenging dynamic on a board, or, or anybody of people. It's how to, how to make it inclusive, equitable, and really, you know, probing in the work. So, couple of thoughts there.
So, with all, yeah, yeah, so, so with all that, though, what are the next steps that we take to? It sounds like we've gotta define better what it is we're looking for.
Has the board ever had a conversation with cultural liaisons together to talk to them about what the kinds of issues that come forth from the various communities they serve?
Just from these? I don't think we've ever gone, and we've ever gone out and sought them specifically.
Like, sit down at the table with them?
No.
I think, yeah, I, I.
Is that something you do all at one time? Is that something you do all the liaisons at one time?
I think so.
Cause we've done, we've certainly spent board meeting time, and it, with worst things, I mean, that's, that's a, a good topic to go.
But I, I agree with Harry's observations. One of the things that this board has done very well is this unknown protocol. We actually let other people, all of us, share thoughts. And his observ- And his observations are very good, because by demonstrating that allows other people to also understand this is the norm. Of that we're really wanting to listen to everybody's thoughts when they're at the table. I don't know if you wrote the, our protocol, what we just did inherently, because it's not set that that's what we do. But that is a great observation, and I think that's what encouraged the healthy discussions that we've been having as a board since my time has been here. And, 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 and that is the norm, and we need to, if we're gonna bring those folks in, they need to understand that that is our protocol, that they will have a chance to speak. And by making that more explicit and more transparent, it begins easier, and even for the students to hear that. To know that this is what we're hoping to hear when it comes to all issues or whatnot when they're coming on to the board. You've just articulated a protocol that I didn't realize we've been following. But you've been at so many, probably other school boards where this hasn't, this is, is this a norm or?
There's a wide range of practice on boards, and I, I think it's the exception where there's this kind of free flow and full participation.
And, and I think what, what was eye opening for me was when, because I forget about it. Is that you said that even for adults, it's difficult to be on the board to express your thoughts.
Except others that may not express thoughts that are aligned exactly with yours.
Which, reading is still. All different issue. But I think ultimately we need to answer Sean's question of, if we're gonna bring the students to the table, what are we expecting?
That is the first conversation.
And that, I'm glad we're having a discussion, because having the students at the table is interesting. But it's not the endpoint, we've gotta have some better focus on, on why. Like Alex, I, I agree with you in our last meeting, that the discussions that we had were probably some of the more powerful ones that, that I've heard. It was from the heart, it was, and I think you just solicited, give us, tell us what impacts you, right? What, what has impacted you?
I said earlier, I think it's about, if you define with as much clarity as you can, why you want student voice. We can help you define, or take, to articulate the questions, to frame. And then help with like venue and structure and things to really get true responses. Because it is, you know, the, the one thing that's really sticking with me is, it's relational. And you all don't have that relationship with the student body necessarily. And they see you as the top of the hierarchy, you know, and they, many see me that way too. So how do you, how can we, once you define that purpose, create ways? And, and maybe it's not traditional, you know, the same council and stuff, but maybe it's more driven by what it is that you're looking for. And then having students and teachers work on, you know, in, in the school. Struggling and, and wrestling with those questions a little bit, and then you coming in in some way and, and listening to that. And maybe it's not even necessarily a, you know, a board meeting, or it's, you know, it's a community forum, or it's, you know. Maybe it's not the full board, or maybe it's a video that you can watch, or, you know, there's many ways to get that information to you. But I still haven't heard why you, what's the purpose for the board to dig into this? Why, what are you looking for?
Validation of the ends would be my, I think my short answer to that. Somehow to validate that we are qualitatively to validate that we are, get, or quantitatively, but I think it's gonna be more qualitative. Are we, as a district, getting to the ends? You're bringing a bunch of data and measurements to us, but those are data and measurements.
Which means you really wanna know if, how the students are experiencing being prepared.
Are they feeling like they're.
Gonna be successful and productive and healthy and be engaged citizens?
Are they being trained to be engaged in the community? Are they feeling like they're prepared for college and career? And what are the things, what are the things that are working?
I think going back to what you were just sharing, that, you know, that they don't feel like they matter. Or that they're not being seen and heard here, that their voice doesn't matter. The apathy piece.
There's not a pipe to, to bring it out, right? There's not a place to bring it out?
I mean, my sense is not so much that they don't matter, but they are not invested in the, 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 the school as a, as members of, all members of a community working toward the good of the community, or the betterment of the community. I don't, I don't see that kind of.
What about if you ask the students what their ends are? I mean, it's an interesting question to ask them to validate your ends. Which I'm not saying is invalid, but it is a different starting point. I, look, I, this is really the same experience I've had here multiple times. I, I don't really know the answer, I don't know what to recommend to you, but like that question just occurs to me when I hear you say. We want them to validate our ends, okay, well, that's an assumption that you got the right ends. And if you're asking for student voice, what you're really asking for is like, tell us how we did. Which is a very different question from, what, what's, what's, like, what's the ends question? It's like, what's most important to you to have when you leave this school system? Or, I don't, I, I mean, anyway, I don't know how you elicit.
It's also about asking them about what's, what's most essential about your experience in this school building. Like what matters to you here as you're living it, and certainly like, once you leave it. But I, I like that orientation of asking them, I mean, we're asking for their voice. Yeah, does it match? Cause we, we don't have to tell them what it, you know, they might not know what it is, although it's positive in the school, but again, it's a snoozer. But do they know what it is, but would it, does it match?
And I'd be careful on that, because. No, well, because it's letting a seventeen-year-old to define.
Define their own experience for themselves.
No, no, I'm fine with them defining their own experience, but to see the alignment, but I don't necessarily, like, there are things that as a seventeen-year-old, I wanted more of than I realize as a forty-year-old, that like, you know, from an end statement of citizenship and all that. There is a level of knowledge to make sure that, to me, it's really seeing where the alignment is missing, as opposed to making the change totally on the end statement.
I was not going where we would change the end statement to match it, but just to get their perspective.
But when you start asking why, like what ends do you think matter to you? You begin opening that door for them to think that they can change the ends.
If I were to have said something about how Up For Learning does our work. Our work is not just about student voice, it is always youth, adult partnership and student voice. Because adults can't leave their responsibilities at the door and just say, tell us what you think. So I, I do think it's, but, but when you get into that kind of exchange, where you're gonna be as direct with them as you're asking them to be with you. You do find, I mean, our experience is you find a powerful place that everybody owns.
Right, and I'm just mentioning, be careful.
Yeah, it's, absolutely.
Pendulum, like make sure that we find that right balance there. Because if we're not careful on it, right, and then we ask.
I mean, I think that's the whole thing, going in and finding a set of practices that allow for that.
And I wasn't here when that ends and the graduate expected was the year or two before I got here. But my understanding was there was some degree of student involvement.
So, and I wanna, I was there, and, and a part of that, it was a two-year program. And the students at every turn, when adults were over talking and we want, you know, about our graduation expectations. You know, two hours, and they would pipe in, but they would, and we'd turn and go, okay, what do you think? And they just got to the heart of it, and we would all look around like, well said. And they nailed, clearly got us moving forward after we did all of our spinning around as adults. And it was powerful having them on this committee, there was two middle school students and two high school students and probably ten adults, you know, and every time they got us, they reoriented us where we needed to be for their voice. It was, it was a powerful process.
So, does student voice to us then mean that we go and ask? Not in this, necessarily in this setting, but in theirs? To, to your, to your original point? And is that outreach on, I'll call it a regular schedule, be it monthly or whatever, is that, does that give us enough to tie that visit to the ends to get something out of it?
Yes and no, I think Sean brings up a, a good point that there, it's his kinda position to figure out what the, the means are. Like, I don't mind if they make another video to explain to me what they think are the ends. If they feel more comfortable to be more open without talking in front of us. Right? And then slowly build the trust on that. You know, for us to go in and force our way in may be a mistake too. I, I, I don't know, I mean.
Because I find that the way that we did the conversations two years ago with the groups of middle school and high school kids, you know, we had it facility, we did it well, we had the questions that we wanted to ask, they were so open and engaging with us. Like they were, you know, it set a tone of being able to just, we wanna know your experience, like we're just here to learn from you. And it, they didn't hold anything back, and we didn't change the math lab, right? I mean, they told us everything that we, and it was in stuff, it was, I mean, it was mean stuff. But what we were really asking them, you know, we had, what are the strengths of the school? You know, what are you proud of in this school? What's the one thing that you would change? Like, you know, and it was a, it was a robust, we were exhausted after those days.
How did that impact your work as a board member?
I think, go ahead, what do you, you wanna talk?
I'll let you go first.
For me is recognizing how insightful students are about their own experience in a system that is designed for them, but doesn't always, but isn't necessarily built for them. Right? I mean, public schools are public schools. But their ability to be positive and know strengths and know where they are in it, but also know like, here's one thing, like school lunch, right? That was like, is about as loud as math lab, and the school lunch has changed, and they're all very grateful about that. Not that we did anything about that, we did not, but we pass the words on, but.
So, can I just stop you one second? So that, when you were asking like where it's present in the school, to me, that's a good example. Where kids, so they heard from you guys, they were like, they brought something up, and then it became an expedition. Or there was a group of kids who met with the Abbey Group and some teachers to look at the cafeteria and stuff. So that stuff does happen, and that's where I think it, it, it's actually real. So, but, but you start, you guys started that process. So how do we have structures that start that process more regularly?
And maybe dipping in more often than we did those two years ago, which is crazy that that was two years ago.
And I'll say, what, where it helped me was on the communication and with our other stakeholders. Because I actually could see the difference between how students talk about diversity in the community versus how our outside community was perceiving, you know. The strengths and weaknesses, like, like if you look at that model, again, I'd still go back to that model and understand. That helped me formulate, to see the relationship between the school, the community, and the other stakeholders in building that. It was powerful to hear about, you know, what we talked about, the things of communication, about how some students see being a small school as a strength, but also a weakness. Diversity as a strength and a weakness. Like, and, and how that, on our duty to have a better job, explain how diversity is better. And how better that our students actually understood diversity, but our parents did.
But it was clear, I mean, and I think that that was, that was a start. And I think that it was a, a great start, that we need to have, make sure that we also have a process for what we're gonna do with this information. We have to, we have to think about the feedback loop before we go and ask and engage in them and be curious, like just being curious with them.
Try to wrap things up, and from what I'm hearing and what, from what I've heard in the past. The three sessions that you guys did? You seem to have gotten significantly more out of those sessions. As far as student voice and input to quote-unquote the board. Than we've had with our students sitting at the table. We've had some authentic student voice down to the things that really matter. We've had a few conversations here that have done that. Is that, do we, is, is authentic student voice to us, having the student at the table? Or going to them and listening, and is that what we wanna take out of this? Do we set that in our structure to do that on a regular basis? Be it twice a year, once a year? And if we're gonna get more out of.
Practice, like it's really about our practice, not theirs, they have, they know what their experience is. How do we shape it so that we know what we're asking, what our purpose is, what are we looking for, and then what are we gonna do with it, and how are we gonna communicate back?
Cause I'm also conscious of their time when they do come, that we're not, you know, just having them sit here to read their report and be done, right? That, that's interesting, but it's not very good use of their time, they could be studying.
And I wanna be conscious of like the forms that we do, because if we do it like a large cafeteria, where we bring twenty or thirty in, in one room. We have to make sure that we provide methods to allow everybody to have a voice, and it's not two students speaking.
Well, I think that if we're gonna move forward, we're, we're gonna go in, yeah, we're gonna go in with some well-thought-out facilitation around all of that. I mean, again, like how we structure the conversation, what we're looking for, and then how we're gonna loop back around.
And would there be time in the schedule in the day through the year to do that? I know we have half-days here.
If we have enough foresight, yes. And by enough foresight, I mean, like a few months at least.
It's gonna take us a few months to get it together.
I think this might need more planning than we're gonna be able to accomplish tonight, though.
Oh, yeah, 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 so I'm, that's why I'm trying to wrap up now to next steps and where do we go from here?
And just one other note for the teens, like, I'm conscious that it's like eight forty and we still have a lot of agenda left. If I'm an adolescent who started their day at seven thirty this morning, by now I'm like, completely tuned out.
And just, I think there's an opportunity, if you're gonna do that kind of engagement, to think about structures at this table where young people could participate. But that may be different than being a representative at the table for everything, every meeting, so.
I think that's a creative thought, is maybe it can be a variation on.
We've had colleges in here, we've had employers in here, we've had, we've tried with the community members. We're talking about getting potentially the liaisons in to have that discussion. It's a worthwhile discussion. We've just gotta format it and formulate it, right? So, from a next step standpoint, Harry, I, I know we've asked you to come here as, as part of Up For Learning. From what you've heard, is there anything that you can synthesize to? And, and it doesn't necessarily need it tonight, but to think about, if, is there something that you guys can propose to help us?
Yeah, I'd love to think this over with Sean and come back to you. I mean, I do think the core of it is what you're talking about, which is, what are the structures to engage people in this conversation? Get the data, get the stories and the numbers for, to inform our conversation here. And where do students fit into that whole sequence? So, yeah, so yes, that's my.
Okay, all right, so I, I, cause I'm glad we didn't, you didn't think that we wasted your time here, cause I know it's been kind of a free-form discussion, but that's.
Honestly, I would say something like I said at the outset, I mean, I think grappling with it, I mean, your thoughtfulness in grappling with it, I really I appreciate, but I also feel very engaged in, and you know, it's pushing my thinking. So I'd love the opportunity to come back with, by working with Sean and think about, well, what might this look like if we were to help orchestrate the process in some fashion? And I don't think that you would have to have someone from outside, I just think that can be helpful at times and places. So, let me think it over with you and we can.
Yeah, I would find it helpful just from a capacity perspective. To have somebody who could, yeah, really work on the plan instead of feeling like that was another thing.
If it's us going into the classroom periodically, or, or a group setting with students, that to me is very much more authentic than reading the, the sports scores. And then again, what we do with it, how we formulate it, so thank you, Harry, for your time. Thank you for that. So we have several policies here to go through, harassment of employees and alcohol and drug-free. Start there. And if I noted the employee harassment, it was almost the same one we have now, is pretty much the basic. The front header, right?
Yeah, it's awesome.
Yep.
And all the definitions are the same.
So Sean, I don't know, do you have any?
I don't.
Issues with any of these?
I don't have any recommendations for revisions on it.
My only question was, um, the non discrimination coordinator is the Winuski School District. Finance major, is there a reason why it isn't the human resources person? Under D procedure?
Oh, yes, that should be changed.
Nice.
Yep, and that's in the procedures, right, so I can change that immediately without.
Please do.
Good catch, thank you.
Oh, yes.
The non discrimination coordinator should be the human resources.
Alright, so we'll bring that one back then with that minor adjustment.
It's like a needle in a haystack.
All right, alcohol and anything else on the, okay, alcohol and drug free workplace?
They actually seem to, even the the front paragraph is the same on these two.
Yep, and any uh issues with this one, Sean, that do from your perspective? I had uh. I had one comment here, and it, again, it was under procedures, but. The alcohol and, so it's all down in a procedures item for superintendent establishing alcohol and drug free awareness program, is that something that we have?
So that's part of the EAP.
Okay.
That we.
Employee Assistance Program, okay.
Buy into for all.
Oh, good, so people have access to it.
Yep.
All right. Good, all right, anything else on that? All right, and then the one that we had. Brought in here last month, we decided to bring it back as a discussion point again, because we didn't get to to do the time to it, and that is the uh. Non resident tuition students, and Sean, your upfront uh letter here. Mentions the thoughts about adopting the V S B A model for the admission of non resident students. Repealing one of our procedures and striking a portion of of the others, uh, and I think. The, I had just a couple of of comments, um. The first one, right up in under the policy in the header. Um, the statement says that uh this policy shall not apply to students who are enrolled through the public high school. Choice program created by Act one twenty nine, how does that? Fit into non resident tuition, what is the difference between those two?
So the difference is that a um. There's this Act one twenty nine that says, actually, I think it's Act one fifty now, but uh around school choice is that high school students grade nine through twelve. Can apply to any high school in the state, no matter where it is, and uh each high school can set up their own. Yep, uh, minimums and maximums of students that they can accept. Per year, note that's required, and you all approve that in January every year, and then there's an application process. That schools do, uh, and the accepting school would receive the application, and then they would make a determination about who gets in. And then what happens right now, the way that the law is, is if a Winuski resident. And student decided to go to a neighboring school, they applied and they got in, they could attend, we get the money for them.
Okay.
So the accepting school doesn't get anything.
Okay, so the thought there is the ins and the outs will equalize themselves and it overall probably won't matter.
Relatively, but what's happened, because this this statute has not been touched in a long time. Is that many schools are doing very small maximums that they will accept. To minimize their financial exposure.
Okay.
Like, what are we talking for, like, Burlington example, or South Bronx?
Uh, they might do ten.
And then, so so that's this, and that, so the non resident tuition.
So that, so this is, this, and what it's saying here is that this policy would would not apply to those students that access. School choice as it is written in the law right now. So, that's only for high school, so this would be for, basically for K eight. Or a high school student who did not apply through school choice and still wanted to pay tuition to come here. Does that make sense, or is that, I might.
Yeah, no.
Sometimes I'm in my own world and I'm not the edgy jargon or. I mean, in in essence, it's kind of a carve out for high school students. That there's already exists a way for high school students to go to other schools without paying tuition.
And there, what about, so, but they can also, this would also, this policy would also impact those that. Go around without the school choice piece and wanted to just pay the.
Yes.
Pay the tuition.
Yep, if there was a student from Colchester that said, I wanna go to Winuski, and I didn't, I missed the application process for school choice. Then um you'd follow the rest of the policy to see if they would be accepted or not.
All right, um. And so tuition tuition rates, we said, if I remember right, we've only set one rate, is that right? We've just set a base, basic rate?
No, there's an announced tuition rate for high school, uh, and then. I think it might, I think it's K eight after that, or it might be K five and then six eight, but there's a couple different announced tuitions, yeah. And that's the rate that's referenced.
Okay.
That's what we notify the secretary of ed each year.
And do we do anything special for tuition rates with students on I E Ps? Or for that matter, even E L L, I mean, it's, it's a little, we've got the structure for it.
Right, so it speaks to that, it's a separate, may be established for elementary and for students who are eligible to participate in special ed.
Right.
So we don't put that up front, because that would be in, that would depend on what the disability is and what the services are.
But do we put the tuition, would we put the tuition, should we be stating the tuition plus associated fees? Or is that something that?
Well, that's what it says. That's how I interpret it.
But but do we, but do we do it, this says you can, but do we do it, I guess is my question.
Well, that was. That was part of the exposure with what was in the procedure. Was accepting students to waiving tuition for students, uh, specifically of school employees. And then if they, over time, um, uh, were identified with a disability and and uh. Expenses were more than the av- the the announced tuition, then there was no way that we could go back to the home community and try to claim those expenses from them.
Okay, um.
So I would say what you could do at this point, if you had a student who was coming with a specific I E P and. You, you would, based on those needs, you would express what it would cost to them.
And.
Cause you can't do a single announced tuition for students on an I E P.
No, yeah, understand that, but but it would be a base plus.
Yeah, whatever grade level they were in, any announced tuition plus.
Plus the associated fees, okay, so we would have to specifically detail that. Um, on or before January fifteenth, as the piece says at the top?
Uh, I don't know whether you have to specify that for uh uh students eligible to participate in special education, I would have to look at that. Reference.
Okay.
Cause I've never seen that specifically expressed in anybody else's.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not sure how you, how you would tag that, though. Anybody else got any, I'm I'm monopolizing the discussion here, I apologize.
No, that's good.
Um, the the other one I had shown that is down in section two, and this is for the board here, down in section two, under implementation. Where there's three bullets down below. I had highlighted the first of those bullets, and this is about. Good standing shall be demonstrated when the applicant shows that he or she, the first one is that he or she has not. Been legally dismissed or suspended for more than ten days during the preceding twelve months for disciplinary reasons. Since we're choosing, should that be zero? I mean, you never know what those issues are or were, or whether they're behind, but. So this is, this is on page, this is on page seventeen of that section. And it's under implementation. Down, there's three, there's three bullets down there, I'm looking at the top one specifically about. That you're in good standing if you've been suspended for ten days or less. I don't know.
So I think the next paragraph gives you flexibility in that, it says, if you're, if they're unable to provide evidence of good standing. They may be admitted if it is the determination of the superintendent based on information presented. That there is a reasonable that the applicant will benefit, so. If a student or family came and the kid was suspended for thirty days, but we asked questions and they submitted. You know, a letter, and I came to you and recommended, you know what, I, based on this, even though it exceeds that number of days, I would recommend that this student would benefit from coming to Winuski. You know, my recommendation is you grant them the ability to pay you tuition to come here, then you could do that.
Okay, that work? Okay, okay, um. Then you had mentioned, I think up above is removing out of procedure three oh five, which is page nineteen.
Uh, remove.
Top, one through four.
Right, okay.
Yep, right, under tuition costs, cause they're covered up above, and I was looking at the one statement in here, though, it says although, number three. Although tuition agreements shall be for ones, all tuition agreements shall be for one school year or remaining fraction thereof, when we're. If we strike that and we go to this policy, is this a year to year, or is this a guarantee to the end of that piece of time in the school? In other words, if we take in a tuition student in the third grade, are we by definition, I didn't see anything in there, that's why I'm asking, are we taking them until eighth?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, cause I thought I I remember seeing something in here about that, but I can't put my finger on it.
I came back and looked through it after, and I wasn't sure I saw anything that said this is a year to year. It's not necessarily implied that it's. But, and and does it matter, if we accept them for one, do we accept them through the entire timeframe, or does this go every year?
Um, my my experience with this is that it's an annual um renewal.
Which I would hope it would be.
Yeah.
So that you can revisit those criteria.
You just revisit period every year, you just go back.
Cause I would think as a high school kid, they would want, you know, like, if you're gonna come in as a freshman, you.
You want that consistency.
You know, so it might be a little terrifying.
Well, they should get a school choice pa- application in the next year, if they're paying tuition, then they could not have to pay tuition, potentially.
Right, right, okay.
But. Yeah, I can ask about that and see, cause it does make, if it's not assumed somewhere in statute that these are annual agreements in those references. Then I agree, I think it should be written into the policy that they would be, that it should be an annual consideration.
I mean, there's no reason we wouldn't renew it year after year for like a high school kid, you want him to, you want him to stay, right, so.
Well, you want continuity, I think, for any kids, but, but yeah. I'll ask that, all right.
And again, this, it has been a practice in the district. To allow some of our staff to bring their their students here. This, that's where this is gonna take place, so.
Is it still in the con- is that in the contract?
It's not in the contract.
No, it's been an informal.
It was in this procedure.
Okay, and that's.
Well, it was in the procedure before I revised the procedure this summer. And it was taken out of the procedure.
So it's no longer available for our teachers?
No, and that's why we're bringing this policy to you this fall, so that we can get something in there, because it's kind of a void right now.
Okay, cause we wanted it there.
If a teacher came, I would have to bring them to you, and you wouldn't have any policy to kind of, you just make a decision.
Okay.
So what this does upon acceptance, um, is that. In general, all students that come in pay tuition. That's that's the base, that's the standard.
Yes.
To allow anybody in and waive the tuition. Set you up for the questions later of, you did it for one, you didn't do it for for another, so you really have a hard time. Waiving that tuition at all. So. Any other thoughts, we'll check on the one year.
Right.
To make sure.
And what's 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 going in about teachers and their students?
Nothing.
Nothing.
They would be, they would have to come to you willing to pay tuition, if they wanted their. What I did with this, with the the employees and their children who are in the school now is they are grandfathered through graduation.
Okay.
But just no acceptance of new waivers of tuition for employees.
Okay. And teachers are aware of this, back up me?
Yes, it was put out in June, and then the the specific folks were given a letter so that they had evidence of being grandfathered, if they needed it in the future.
Yeah, that's a big deal, because we don't want anything to change, but things change.
Yep.
All right, so we're all set with adding that as a policy for us to move forward with, we'll check the one year. Looks like everything else is good. All right, um, any changes to the header on the policy, all the other ones we like, this is a V S B A standard, which is usually pretty dry and boring anyway? All right.
Until you need them.
Until you need them, and then you gotta make sure they're there, and the other piece that came along with this is, I mean, and they're, they are procedures, but the. The the thought was to wipe out one through four on page nineteen, which is part of the procedure three oh five, and then taking out completely procedure five oh four. On page twenty one. All right, so that will come through as a second reading in our consent agenda next time.
Yep, next month, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, executive limitations, budget and timetable is next, is that the next one?
This was in your, this was in the packet last month, it's just a reminder of the schedule, um, and. Uh, I wanted to make sure to get the reminder in there about um all of you. Getting a budget buddy if you can to bring to the meetings, and it's always helpful if they can come to all of them, but particularly on the front end. There's a lot of information in that first meeting on December fourth, that's really useful if you're gonna be there throughout the process.
All right, so again, I think we've had a limited success with the budget buddy, but the more people in the room helps, right? All right, next piece, uh, superintendent, uh, the monitoring report on emergency superintendent succession.
So the only changes are um uh really names, so Krista Parisi, my new assistant, and uh Jean Berthium. New middle high school co-principal.
Yeah, this one here gives me comfort in the fact that we've got, I mean, don't obviously want anything.
It makes me mor- makes me morbid, when I, when I read.
It is, it is unfortunately a necessary evil that I don't think a lot of things do.
Makes me look both ways twice as I cross the street, makes me do a few things differently.
That's because you were gonna win the lottery. I don't understand why you're all morbid, you are like.
So you won the lottery, he's outta here.
Mine is always hit by the passing, others is lauding.
Well, if that happens, you just get somebody new.
We'll have him pay the rest of his own contract, finish out his term.
Wish I was in that position.
Yeah, no kidding, right, um, all right, so, um. I think we're gonna, we have to approve that one, so I'll accept a motion to accept the uh monitoring report on emergencies superintendent succession policy two point five.
So who?
Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post. Okay, capital project update?
So I put everything in the report, I just am keeping this as, we're keeping this as a standing monthly agenda item. In case you have questions or things come up between when the agenda goes out and the meeting that I feel like I need to share with you. But I think everything really that I wanted to provide to you this month was, was in the report with all those links to the phasing and the logistics. And the design updates and so forth.
And there is a visual on the design that's coming, I don't think it's quite ready for primetime yet.
It's going to be posted around the building tomorrow or Friday.
It has QR codes, and the QR codes, you can put them on your phone and can turn around the room and just see what it looks like by the design that they have there now. So it's pretty.
Yeah, Margaret got to see it at the fundraising meeting too.
Nice, it is cool, I thought it was really, so, is it going to be posted online somewhere?
It'll also, it'll also be posted online.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when that comes out, it might be a point of reference to, to point people to and let them review.
Yeah.
The only other piece of that is there's, one of the design questions was about whether we put in and look at the requirements. For, what is it, 2022 codes or 2021 codes? That had the solar piece in the piece, I don't know that we did that. Yeah, there's a coming component of the, of the codes in the design. That some portion has to be solar for your piece, so that can be leasing solar from somewhere else. Putting panels on a roof, putting them on a, you know, across a soccer field, which you don't do. But there will be kicking around, what would you do if you had, how would you do something if you had some, had to have some component be solar? So, we talked about the geothermal piece last time, so just another piece that was enlightening. Alright. Section eight here to board management policy on a 3.3, which is delegation to the superintendent. It was just a discussion on staff diversity, Sean and I had been talking about our, it has come up a couple of times before. Our staff looking like our population. I don't know if you want to take your thoughts.
Yeah, well, and another thing, it came up at the board retreat, you know, as something that the board was interested in pursuing. It's something that I've been interested in pursuing, but have not done it in a systemic way. And, you know, every time we, we do manage to interview someone or hire someone of color. Our students who interview potential teachers, they, they talk about it very articulately and that means a lot to them. And Hussein Murray talked about it in the video that you may have watched. That was at the Roland Conference. So to me, this is just really, really important and, you know, Margaret had brought it up at the retreat. And I would love if the board would just kind of affirm the idea that. And give me the latitude and with, and utilize Margaret, if she's available. In connection with our human resources coordinator to, to start to move on this a little bit. We didn't necessarily budget money this year to do it, but I think there might be some planning and some initial steps that we could take. With recruiting in the, in the spring and then keep doing a little bit more as we move forward.
I certainly support that, move forward to, to get the.
It is necessary, it needs to be thoughtful.
Right.
And thorough, it needs to happen, and it's not easy, it can happen, right?
It doesn't lend itself to local efforts, it, it requires a little more than, a little more outreach than that, just because the pool. So, that's part of where the budget piece comes in, is to go look, so.
That is awesome.
Everybody good with giving that direction to move forward with that, I think that's a very worthwhile effort.
Great.
Alright. Policy 34, board monitoring, report on monitoring superintendent performance. Does this hit our? This is a long one. Anything you see in here that, can we conclude that we are in compliance with this in total? I ask at least that, from a high level. I just noticed down at the bottom that I still had the conclusion on 347 to be partial compliance. I'm thinking that that, I think that we have done that at this point.
So strike partial?
Uh, yeah, let me just make sure. We have started the investigation of the salary and, so I think, I think we're. Yeah, I think we're in compliance with that one, so just report compliance at the bottom.
Okay.
I missed that, sorry. Any other thoughts here? Everybody, losing everybody? Okay, in time. There we go, enthusiasm, that's what I like. Alright. So all those in favor, sorry, I accept a motion to accept the monitoring, board monitoring report on Policy 3.4. Monitoring superintendent performance. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye? Post. With enthusiasm, all those in favor. Alright, that brings us down to the bottom of our piece. Any recent community activities to report?
I just started the charter, the charter committee, I'm a non-voting, we're a non-voting university. That we have school board representation on whether we will change the charter to be more inclusive of residents. That are not citizens of the United States and voting.
That's the one charter change that is being.
There's a bunch of other small procedures, like, you know, wording, like, you know, we don't have a volunteer firefighter or something like that. They'll work on some of that, but it, we had our first meeting. Yeah, we had one, our first meeting last.
Tuesday?
Last Tuesday, and they're going to plan to meet every other Tuesday now, so starting February, November 19th. Meet once every two weeks and have good discussions about that, so. It's an interesting group, the student that is from Winuski, I think Hussein is on that committee. And he represented himself very well, I look forward to working with him on that committee.
There you go, shows up in all kinds of places, right?
There were some fun soccer games between last time we all met, super fun, heartbreaking, but good. They represented themselves well.
Good. Alright, a reminder, we do have an executive session, shouldn't be too lengthy, but we do have that coming.
Craft fairs this weekend, I didn't get on there, but just so you know, it's PTO sponsored. They would love for people to come and check it out.
Alright. Let's see, anything, anything else? Don't think so.
And I just wanted to say a piece of thanks, that I know gratitude is helpful for our mental health. I'm thankful for the school board and every member on it, I think we do have really good productive conversations. And I just wanted to say thank you, and for those who support my oddities such as we're purple on Wednesdays, so thank you. On that level, but, but no, thank, I mean, we should be, I, I'm very thankful for being part of the school board. And I think we're making, we're never really there, but I know that we're moving in the right direction.
I would like to say the same, thank you, appreciate the conversations and keeping things in check. Alright, without further ado, I would accept a motion to move into executive session.
So move.
All those in favor, aye? There was a little more emotion in that one, good.